Something like that.
Yeah. You got about six people, seven of them.
Bring it to order and let's go.
You've got lots of houses today.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna waive the Pledge of Allegiance and move in a size that will go right straight to roll call.
Commissioner Ansorkey?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Chairman Bonnet?
Here.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Sodis Little?
Here.
So Matt brings us to, um...
Hold on. Commissioner Lautner?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, my, my roll call is wrong.
I'm here too.
And Commissioner Russel.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Everybody present?
Present or he's present. Lautner's here too, not Walter, Lautner.
So the purpose of the meeting, the Committee of the Whole, Board and Commissions, so you have the floor.
Okay. Prior to the start of the meeting, I presented you with the agenda, and then the other insert is relative to the recently passed recommendations from the Solid Waste Council, which you should insert at the front of Tab 11. They just passed those within the last hour.
Oh, there it is. I see that coming now.
So Tab 11?
Yes. You should also have a new page, double-sided, well, pretty much double-sided handout, at the beginning of your...
No, I...
Just welcome for this.
I can't find that. I had it.
Okay.
Fair, 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 fair.
Got mine.
Malina?
Thank you. This one.
And these are all the draft motions that are suggested. They don't include, there's a room for adding the name that you ultimately end up recommending, so if we could kind of follow this, there's only a few discrepancies with maybe a couple of names on the same, um, motion, simply because they're under the same category. So in looking at your book, at the front of Tab 1, those are the openings, which are highlighted in yellow, as well as a fold-out of all the applicants with, uh, the boards that they have asked to be on, and an email if it's applicable page. Tab 2 is your board policy, which was last revised in 2018, and then we begin the process with the Benzy-Lilna Environmental Health Board of Appeals. That board typically does not provide recommendations.
Commissioner Ansorkey?
I move to reappoint Charles Godboat to the term, two-year term on the Benzy-Lilna Environmental Board of Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Wessel?
I might have missed this. Did we, did we review our policy on the number of terms, or generally the number of terms? As we approach these, do we want to ask the question, how many terms do they serve, and are there other qualified applicants? This isn't directed at that one, it's just in general. It came out a year ago, and I think we ought to review what we...
Do you want to do that? I did do that when I looked at these names and, and, you know, and if there wasn't someone, we have appointed people in here who, there was no one in their position. I mean, if you want to go through the, the policy again right now, because, I mean, it is three terms, basically, for most of them, and some of them have, but there isn't a person to take the place.
Right.
So I, I did, you know...
I, I would like, just as one commissioner, if somebody's reached the limit, we ought to at least acknowledge it and see if there's somebody else eligible to appoint.
Well, I would point out that when I sent out my emails to all those that were either eligible, or they had just concluded a third or more term, I let them know that if they'd like the board to recon, to waive its policy on term limits, to let me know. And other than the Solid Waste Council, and maybe one other where they have a hard time getting a lot of people entrusted in their board, um, for example, Mr. Forster had served four terms on the Northwestern Regional Airport Commission, and he chose not to be reconsidered for that.
Well, and the other one I saw was, Mark Walter was on, I believe, Land Bank, and he chose to be reappointed, but we were not, I mean, I, they weren't recommended to appoint him, even though he said yes, because he's served a number of terms.
And Land Bank felt, just out of respect for the county policy...
Right.
That they should not recommend him.
That was the only one where I really felt that it was instituted, you know, and all the rest, I didn't see where there was a, a conflict with it, unless somebody else saw something else.
Solid Waste Council.
Yeah, yes, I, but, but there's nobody to replace him. There's no name in there to replace the people that exceeded it. You follow me?
No.
If the, the policy, they've exceeded the policy, but there's no person applying for that position, so we could replace them. So, and they're willing to serve again, so...
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
What kind of makes it a little more difficult, too, is something like the Solid Waste Council, they have more than one category, and if they don't have anyone else in that particular category, your hands are kind of tied, and I think the categories are assigned by state statute.
Yeah, and, and we have the same issue a lot of times with the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Because they have certain categories they have to fill, and we don't always have applications for those categories. Commissioner Sood.
I was just going to move onward.
Please do.
Okay. I, uh, move to, uh, recommend the Board of, I moved... How do I say? Just say it like it's written, and we're gonna forward it. I moved to appoint, thank you. I moved to appoint George, and are you gonna have to tell me the last name?
Howlachi.
Thank you. Lovely name, to the Building Safety Board of Appeals.
Support.
Electrical category.
This is to recommend to the Board...
This is a clerk question. You are recommending today.
Okay, I recommend.
This is the Committee of the Whole.
Yeah. So I was moving to recommend, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. The Health Department, Human Services Commissioner?
Um, I would move to appoint, reappoint Greg McMarle.
Second.
Thank you. To the Department of Health and Human Services Board, for a three-year term expiring 12/31/22.
I still second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
All these...
Motion passes 7-0.
Yes, 7-0. All these motions will be, they'll have the expiration date time as you can.
Commissioner Soodis, move.
I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appoint Dan Heinz to the Land Bank Fast Track Authority Board to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we're to the Airport. Commissioner Rushton?
I would move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, uh, to appoint Steve Plamondon to the NRRAC Commission, to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Parks and Rec? Commissioner Wessel?
I move to appoint John Walter to the, um, Parks and Recreation Commission for a two-year term.
Three-year.
Three-year term.
Second.
All those in favor?
Um, thank you. Um, we, we had, um, two great applicants for that board rea-, John, and then we had Janet, and... Who? Uh, Janet.
She will be appointed too.
Dickerson, yeah.
No, she's deferred.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she's deferred. Oh. So, so she's just going to stay on township, is that right? Is that she first?
I talked to Janet, uh, because I had, I had talked to Laurel and volunteered to do that. I, I know Janet, and I, uh, wanted to let her know that we had talked about her name, and she said that she wouldn't limit her involvement to just township.
Okay. Because we're quite, quite heavy to the south, southeast portions of the county in representation, and, you know, we talked about that before, but there's nothing else we can do about that.
And I believe that the third person on our list who we talked about was Don Ferwick, the bicycle guy.
An excerpt from...
Doctor Don Ferwick, that, we got the recommendation from one of the staff here, and Don is a doctor, he does live in Lilna Township. He's involved with bicycles, he did apply, and he was one that John Popa and Steve Christensen both spoke positively about.
An excerpt from the Parks meeting is at the beginning of Tab 8.
Okay, and this is the, um, Bob Johnson's seat then, would be the second seat?
That would be the vacancy, but you're still voting on the first one for the floor.
Right, but, but it's, the first one is, replaces George Balls, right?
Clayton.
Or Clayton Balls?
Yeah.
Yes, he's tapped George Balls. Okay. Anybody clear that up?
I would also like to raise the point that in our policy on Page 3, we, um, like for our citizens to serve on only one board, and I see that Mr. Walter is currently serving on a different board.
Well, they talked about that as well, but the reason that they went ahead with recommending him is because the board he's currently seated on hardly ever meets, if ever, maybe once a year at the most.
What's the CCBOA?
It's the Construction Co., Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Right.
In fact, we've had one meeting in the seven years I've been here.
Yeah.
I just point that out, because it is in our policy, so we'd have to waive...
We have to waive our board policy?
Our board policy. I'm pulling a Tony Ansorkey.
Ooh. Wow, that's serious.
Kind of keep it orderly.
So we already voted on that one?
No, we haven't.
Just seconded it.
So will we add that to the motion?
To...
Move that we waive our board policy and appoint John Walter to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Support. He'll be a great addition to Architectural.
Thank you for all of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we may turn the page.
Do we have a second one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner?
I move to recommend, uh, Don Ferwick, uh, to the Parks and Recreation Commission to a partial term expiring December 31st, 2021.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Wait, wait, we can have a second.
Second.
Second. Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
You did a good job, you did a good job.
We've got three minutes.
We're on the Planning Commission. Commissioner Sodis Little, please.
I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to reappoint Dan Hubbell to the Planning Commission Agriculture category to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0, please.
I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to reappoint Jessica Lukowski to the Planning Commission Tourism category to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Do you want to waive the policy because she's been...
Because she's term limited.
I want to talk about that, because...
Are you willing to waive the policy?
I am willing to waive the policy and...
And I am.
Okay, now, you'd like to speak to that? Yes.
Well, she's been on since '06.
Yes.
And...
Thirteen years.
Right. But do we have anyone else that, I thought we had one that doesn't serve on anything, or hasn't?
Doesn't fit into the category of tourism.
No other, because I looked at that.
Well, but tourism, if I remember right, what was her background? I know we've bent some of these before to fit, because they're difficult, same as we have with solid waste. We, we bent them to fit into a category. Really, what is tourism?
She's worked for several hotels and, um, administration, uh, the last thirty years.
I mean, that's one, that's one facet of tourism.
Exactly.
You know, there's transportation, there's gas stations, there's, there's, um, convenience stores, there's bed and breakfast, there's all kinds, but do we have anybody else who hasn't served on a board before that could? That's how my question is.
Um, just, uh, inquiry. Is, uh, Gail Carlson related to Eric Carlson?
That's his wife.
That's his wife, okay.
Is she on here?
She is.
Oh, yeah.
I would, I would recommend Gail. She hasn't been on, I don't think she's done any other.
Right, I've never seen her on a board.
She's got a medical background, as I understand.
Yeah, nurse.
So we, we have a motion on the floor for Jessica Lukowski, okay?
But we're in discussion about whether...
We're in discussion about it, I know, but I'm just saying that we do have that motion on the floor.
I know she's been on for a number of years, so...
Yes, she has. So are there any other statements about it? You know, Commissioner Wessel?
Well, I think, I think because we have other applicants, and Jessica's served her terms, we ought to go to somebody that has not.
Well, but what is Gail listed under? I, I should grab my book.
Her, her case is medical.
Yes, registered nurse. Could she represent tourism? That's the question. I think I could represent tourism.
Is that medical tourism?
I don't know.
So that, that's the, the problem.
Maybe she has, you know, did she? Has she ever worked in a hotel, or mini store, or...
She probably would fix somebody while she was in a hotel.
Right. Call them on wherever you are at the time. Has she ever eaten in a restaurant?
Well, and it's interesting, under what are your qualifications for appointment, she didn't list anything, and maybe that's because she didn't really feel she fit in the category either. It's too bad we couldn't put her somewhere.
Well, I, I think, you know, we have to move forward with this vote, so, and then we can go on, but, yes.
My final comment is, you know, I think we should give somebody else a chance.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay.
So then you vote no.
I understand. That's, that's making my comment.
Unless the vote's, well, then we don't have to vote no.
Well, we don't want to vote no, so I'll withdraw the motion. Can I do that?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's up to the second.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the motion's withdrawn. So now we gotta make someone for tourism?
I would appoint, um, Gail Sharp Carlson.
I'll support.
Tourism slot.
Well, we're gonna have to change her application then, or?
No.
Tourism?
No.
She's well-traveled.
She's going to fit in that slot. That's the slot we're going to appoint her to.
If she has experience in travel, she's well-traveled.
Her daughters, her kids are traveling now.
So do we have a second on that?
Somebody did.
Deb?
I did. Deb did. Deb did.
Sorry, I missed it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. I just don't, I don't like the idea of doing that, so... All right, so we're on, we have, we have person, so Jessica's out, and...
Gail Carlson is in.
Gail Carlson is in.
Then I would...
Commissioner Lautner?
I'd recommend, um, Tom Nixon be reappointed to the Planning Commission Board.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. So now we're at soil erosion, stormwater runoff. We have two here.
No feedback from Fred, as far as wanting to be reappointed? Was he asked?
I sent out an email and then a second email, and he didn't respond to either.
Okay.
What tab are we in now? Ten? What tab is that? Ten?
Oh, it's a ten.
Ten.
Yeah.
Well, I worked with Forrest Welch on the, um, Land Bank. Uh, he had a conflict about coming to meetings, and he ended up resigning.
I suspect the soil erosion Board of Appeals does not meet much.
I'm just stating a historical fact.
Yeah, this, this board doesn't meet much, that was my point.
So that might work for him.
Yeah.
So we have, we have two openings, John and Richard, who don't serve on anything right now, correct? And...
And, and...
Some that have never served.
Forrest had a conflict?
He, he had problems with getting off of work or something. He said that it was hard for him to make those meetings at Land Bank. I believe it was Land Bank, he was a veteran.
It was Land Bank.
It was. But if they don't meet very often, I mean, he might be able to work this out.
I don't think they've met since they were forced to create a board.
Maybe that would be a good board to put them on.
I'll make a motion to appoint, um, Forrest Welch, but, uh, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Stormwater Runoff Control Ordinance Board of Appeals to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Do we have two openings?
We have another one, yes.
And Mr. Messer submitted a new application and has indicated an interest in it.
Who had, oh, Jack?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ansorkey? I would move to recommend Board of Commissioners to reappoint Jack Messer to the Soil Erosion Sedimentation Storm Runoff Control Ordinance Board of Appeals to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2022. Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. I bring this to the Solid Waste Council?
And I would refer to that handout that I handed you earlier. Um, the only difference is that second motion, I've crossed out Lynn Bailey, because they actually made one motion for all three, although that you don't need to waive the board policy on Patrick Deering. He hasn't served three terms yet. So that's why...
Say that again. Say that again.
Yeah. So of the first motion, it was supposed to be Mark Bevelheimer, James Palmer, and Pat Deering, but I split it up, because Pat Deering is, he's being reappointed, but you don't have to waive your policy, because he hasn't exceeded three terms yet.
Okay, I would make a... Now, the second motion, why is, okay, we've got Lynn crossed out and Bailey.
Because they didn't technically make that separate motion.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Peach.
That's okay. I was going to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to waive our policy and reappoint Mark Bevelheimer and James Palmer to the Solid Waste Council Solid Waste Industry category to two-year terms expiring December 31st, 2021. Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we have the Bailey, or Patrick Deering.
Yes. Yeah. I would move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to re, to reappoint Patrick Deering to the Solid Waste Council Solid Waste Industry category to a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
I would recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appoint John Fletcher to the Solid Waste Council Public category to a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
I would love to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to waive our policy and reappoint Tom McDonald to the Solid Waste Council Local Government category to a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Support. Discussion? Yes.
Is, is the reason why is because we have nobody else in that category?
Right.
Is that...
What is his category? Local government.
Mr. Isfording did not indicate a category he would be eligible for, and Mr. Aaron's already serves on, I think, at least two boards.
He serves on brown fuel.
And you just appointed Mr. Fletcher, so...
But we didn't appoint Richard to anything, did we? Or is he coming up anywhere?
Any other questions about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Lautner?
I move to appoint, uh, move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to, uh, reappoint Bill Perkins to the Solid Waste Council Environmental category to a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2021. Second. Sorry.
Commissioner Wessel, you look puzzled.
Yeah, Bill, Bill has served as chair, and Bill's worked hard on that, I think, but I'm looking at how long he's served.
Ever. He's been there, you know...
And they keep voting him in his chair, because he's so good, and he's so dedicated, and there isn't anybody else that's...
Been there thirty years.
That's amazing.
Thirty.
Do they have to pick a category? I mean, because, environmental, what's that say? I mean, are there any other that can fill in that category that we've got? I, I don't know if it's Richard.
I didn't see anyone.
Am I completely... Ish, Ish, no. Is he tied for him? He's not on any, who, that's, is Richard?
Who? How do you say that last name?
Isfording?
Isfording?
Isfording.
Isforing.
He's not on anything, and...
Wasn't he recommended, though, for another position, one of the other boards?
I don't think so. He has five or some other ones.
Thirty years is a long time.
Yeah.
They'll be awfully disappointed, though, if we change it.
But you use that institutional knowledge.
But we have a lot, we have a lot of other institutional knowledge on there, too. I mean, we would give an opportunity for somebody else to serve on their board. And he can always reapply. He can always come back, right?
After one year.
After one year, he can come back.
One term.
One term. Is there a, it says, see attached cover letter on him, is that maybe, and then, oh, here it is. It's in front, got it.
Does anybody know?
I don't know that Richard at all.
He's from Northport, you know him?
Who?
Richard.
I know where he lives, but I don't know anything about the background.
It says there's a, there is a resume, but I don't see it.
No, he didn't provide anything.
So we don't know anything about him, really?
Okay.
Okay, well, here's his cover letter. Well, we can leave that open until Tuesday. Could we get that?
Do you want to just, um, move that to the regular session?
Well, here's his, why, here's his, Northport, Northinian Kemp Road. Oh, please see attached.
But it's not there.
Oh, it must have, cover letter didn't not make it through.
He never sent it.
He never sent it. Looks like he tried to.
We've done all...
Well...
He sent the exact same packet a year ago, and then before we held our Committee of the Whole meeting, he asked me to pull it, because he didn't think he could make the time commitment, and the cover letter at that time was exactly like the one that we have for this one, but he never submitted a resume for either submissions.
Okay, yeah, well, um, going back to Bill, too, I mean, when you look at his references, it's Marsha Harris, who's the current vice chair, and Bill is the chair, and then Trudy is the second one, and I just think that, you know, as I say, we'd be losing a lot from that committee if we let go of Bill.
But at some point, you gotta give somebody else a chance.
Well, I mean, you're, you're giving somebody a chance that hasn't followed through even on the application process, or that, I mean, just to, just to say, yeah, give them a chance.
Well, if we back up, what about John Fletcher, and back up to solid waste, who else has applied for solid waste that hasn't served on anything? Well, Isfording again. Oh, that's it, same board. I'm going to put John Fletcher on.
Where did you...
Yeah, he's in the, uh, Local Government category.
Well, John Fletcher, you just appointed to the Public category, so...
What about Aaron's? He's serving on some, huh?
Yeah, we do have a recommendation from the Solid Waste Council.
Right.
We had one from our representative in Solid Waste Council, and we don't have other qualified applicants. We had one from our representative in Solid Waste Council, and we don't have other qualified applicants. So, I would suggest that we waive our board policy and support Peach's recommendation.
Is that your motion?
She made the motion.
I made the motion. We're in discussion right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think I added it.
Yeah. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passed, that's what, five to two?
Four to three, I'd say.
Four to three?
Four to three.
The Industry Waste Generator, I'd like to move to the, recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve Kathy Wygeska to the Solid Waste Council Industry Waste Generator category to a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2021. Second. Question?
Yes.
I, has she been able to make those meetings? Ah, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero, yes.
I'd like to recommend to the Board of Commissioners to appoint Jay Johnson to the Veterans Affair Administrative Committee to a partial term expiring December 31st, 2021.
Second.
I believe there is criteria that the, um, person who serves on this board has to be a veteran, and I, is he a veteran?
Yes, he is. As is, are, is one or more of his kids serving currently.
I think his wife applied, and she had a better veteran.
Right.
Oh, yeah, okay, maybe that was it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.